All right, thanks everyone for coming today to the Historic Preservation Commission. I open this meeting of the Historical Preservation Commission at 6:31 PM. First, Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Chair Alcorn.
Here.
Vice Chair, Mrs. Miraab Steele.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Field. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Honi. Commissioner Ritter.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. With Commissioner Henderson absent, Commissioner Smith moves into a voting position. Chair, we have quorum.
All right, great. If everyone next will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so then we'll go ahead and approve our agenda for tonight. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? All right, if there are no changes to the order of the agenda, the agenda is approved. And then we'll approve the minutes from the last meeting. So I ask for a motion and a second for the June 17, 2024, meeting minutes.
I move to approve.
I second.
All right, I'll go ahead and pull up a vote here.
Oh, we do thumbs up, thumbs down.
Perfect, thank you.
Six in favor, the motion carries.
All right, so now we will open up for public comment. So this would be general public comment not related to the public hearings tonight. Is there anyone who would like to speak as a part of public comment? All right, so we have Pam, if you want to head on up, and I'll read our blurb while you're heading up, Pam. If you wish to address the board under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order for this meeting. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. The board is not authorized under the Colorado Opens Meeting Law, Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda.
Hi, my name is Pam, and is there going to be a timer up there, Wendy? My name is Pam Chabron, I live in Block and have from here. First, I'm going to say I came from the museum and a arts and culture master plan kickoff meeting. You folks should have been aware of it. I tried to make you aware through the clerk, the clerk refused to relay my email to you, which I think is wrong. And so I just want you to know it's there, and that historic preservation is part of culture and tourism and economic return for the city. So we need a plan that integrates all of those, and historic preservation is integral. You may not separate historic preservation from financial performance, from transportation, from culture. And my example is Littleton Boulevard, I'll jump to my ask. I want a historic overlay district from Broadway to Lowell, Platte Canyon, and pretty much from the north side of Littleton's boundary to Ridge or a little bit further. And it's an overlay district, we would select not just the commercial mid-century modern of Littleton Boulevard, but also residential in that area as well, we have some extraordinary homes. You know, the theme is, these are not, frankly, rights. We have middle-class assets of small entrepreneurs from the 1890s, from the farming that was enabled by the ditch. And then after World War II, in Littleton, with the small entrepreneurs who built those great little buildings on Littleton Boulevard. They are in total danger now. And so you know, I'm asking you, pleading with you, that the first thing that we need to see on the work plan, I want to see, as a citizen of Littleton who's concerned about our future, is design standards and guidelines for Littleton Boulevard, and actually for Main Street as well, there are different ones, to preserve the character of Littleton Boulevard and prevent bad redevelopment, which is poor fit, and which would just diminish and then pretty much smother the value of our assets on Littleton Boulevard. Mid-century modern depends on the surrounding space, it is critical. And another thing that I worry about is the push for bikes, bicycle and pedestrian safety. I think it's a good thing, not on Littleton Boulevard, because the car culture is what Littleton Boulevard is all about. The signs and the buildings and everything. Transportation Mobility Board, three years ago, said, "We want to consider Powers as an alternative east-west route for bicycles and pedestrians." And in fact, our land use code encourages that kind of development, mixed use, for those amenities along Powers. And even, it could cross the railroad tracks and get into downtown. It is a wonderful transportation idea, and it would benefit all of us. So Historic Preservation Board, we need urgency and importance, criticality on Littleton Boulevard and preservation of the mid-century modern historic assets, thanks.
Thank you, Pam. All right, just to make sure, is there anybody else who'd like to comment as a part of the general public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our general business. So we're going to start with HPC Resolution 04-2024. Sarah, do you want to start us off with a presentation?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. This tax credit application is for 5435 Mohawk Road. Just a little bit of summary, this is for a 25% tax credit. This is a contributing structure within the Arapahoe Hills National Register District, and the work was completed between July of last year and January of this year. Just as, again, another informational background, as we say before, entire scope of work has to be approved, it's kind of an all or nothing, there aren't really conditions with this type of application. This was one that submitted the joint parts one and two, and we are reviewing it within that 90-day application period. This is the location for 5435, in just relation to the boundaries. The house was built in 1962, was part of the district in 2012, and then again, that work period. Pretty simple application in terms of the work, replacement of a nonhistoric roof, and then replacement of two existing skylights. The applicant wasn't completely sure if they were historic, but they are, were replaced with same-size look, et cetera. These are just kind of some before and after, you can see a slight change in the roof, and then the skylights are there in the middle? I don't know if that's... Yeah, that's not really working. There, in the middle on that after picture, those are kind of two squares. So they roughly look fairly similar. And then this is just kind of an image from the street, you don't really notice those changes from looking from that perspective, and then that is just showing the final example for the skylights. Did find that it met the qualifications for the SOI standards for the tax credit, and the total cost, qualified cost, are $23,714.36. Staff is recommending approval of HPC Resolution 04-2024, and the tax credit amount that would be available is $5,928.59.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to questions, I wanted to check if anybody did a site visit?
Jason, I live in that same neighborhood, and we are backyard neighbors. But as was the case last month, I don't have any particular vested interest in the outcome of this. We have not discussed it, and so I don't think recusal is necessary.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff or the applicant? All right, so I guess we'll go ahead then, does anybody want to call for a motion and a second?
I move to approve HPC Resolution 04-2024, approving this historic preservation tax credit for 5435 Mohawk Road in Arapahoe Hills National Register Historic District.
I'll second.
All right, does anybody have any comments for the discussion portion, so we can talk about this motion?
Well, the only, only comment I would offer is, great house, thank you for doing the work.
I was going to say something similar, so thank you, Kim. All right, is everybody ready to go ahead and vote then?
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries. Congratulations.
All right, so next we'll move on to, we have two public hearing items tonight. So the first one is going to be HPC Resolution 02-2024. Sarah, would you like to do your presentation on this one?
Apologies, just making sure the right one is open. There we go. Okay, cool, sorry. So this is for a continued application for COA for 2399 West Main Street, it's Restaurant For Real. So kind of some information on the prior action discussion. This is, as I said, continued, and it was from the June 17, 2024, meeting. No materials that were sufficient to provide the information were presented, or provided for staff. We are recommending to just continue it to the next available meeting. I have informed the applicant and the architect, kind of of that next deadline. We should hopefully have some information by this Friday, and if not, we may just have to kind of keep moving forward. But we are working with them to try to make sure to get correct information to you guys, so that you can make a decision. So I'm not sure about the next process.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I was going to open it up for questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So does that mean that all the materials in the agenda are the same ones that were presented a month ago?
Correct.
Nothing changed?
Nothing, yeah, nothing was provided that...
Thank you.
It kind of answered your question, so wanted to make sure we had that before we did too much more on it.
And so for the discussion portion, just as kind of a note for the record, because Mrs. Miraab Steele wasn't here for the initial discussion, she will not be allowed to move forward in any type of discussion on 02-2024, this meeting, and then any future meetings that we may have with that discussion. And that also includes voting, making a motion or voting to move to another date certain.
Question on that. Will that then disqualify the two commission members who aren't here tonight?
Yes, so they have to be here for the full public hearing in order to vote and make any, participate in any type of discussion on that one resolution.
Thank you.
Correct, yes ma'am. Yes, which is still quorum.
Okay. And so if people who are not present today come to the next meeting, then they're disqualified also. They would have to be here tonight.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Just a point of order, I don't quite understand that. If we're not discussing this, if it's just being put into a continuing... And we did have a discussion at the next meeting, why were those members who aren't here not being...
For public hearings, in order to make a motion and vote for today, even if it's just being continued to a date certain, your information is going to be based on the information that you heard previously, and also the information that you heard today. So, so the commissioners that were not present at the June 17 meeting did not hear the full discussion. And so if you were, you have a choice today, that you can move to a date certain, but you could also continue the discussion today, that's also within your purview, is to have Sarah present fully on it. But even at that, the commissioners that were not here previously, they have not had that full range of information. And it's, so it's essentially entering a judge in the middle of a hearing.
Okay, so at this point then, we'll make a motion, if someone wants to make a motion, either to continue or move forward with the existing motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to continue until the August meeting.
I second that.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the vote, but then it's just for the four people who were here at the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
The vote is four, in favor, the motion to continue carries.
Okay, so then we'll move on to our second item, HPC Resolution 05-2024. Sarah, you want to present on this one?
Okay, so this certificate of appropriateness application is for modifications to an existing rooftop patio at 2329 West Main Street.
Sarah, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to double-check. Ms. Miraab Steele, did you want, did you have a conflict with this property? I think that you mentioned something to me prior to the meeting beginning. Okay, all right, thank you, just wanted to double-check.
So this is a location for 2329 West Main Street, it's at the corner of Sycamore and Main Street. This is just kind of going over the process. COAs are to ensure building and historic character are preserved within our historic districts. The process was noticed and posted properties, sign on property, as well as mailed to property owners and residents within a 700-foot radius. The Historic Preservation Commission has the ability to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the COA, or continue it from our information. Just a quick overview, going to go over the proposed changes, how it relates to the approval criteria, and then staff recommendation. So we're looking at, they are wanting to add a louvered shade structure to that second floor addition, that kind of first bit that's set back. It is meant to be a powder coated tan steel structure, has an area of about 817 square feet, and a height of about 10 feet. The outdoor kitchen and fire pit are not visible, but we're including the application. So we put, so it will be an outdoor kitchen that is about two and a half feet in depth and 12.2 feet wide, and will be pretty much a grill with a stone surround, and then a fire pit is a smaller kind of table, again, with a stone surround. This is the south elevation, looking kind of from Main Street. As you can see, just the top portion of the structure is visible, and the kitchen and fire pit are lower. This is showing kind of that eastern elevation from Sycamore, and you can kind of see a little bit more of the rendered elevation as to kind of what's going on, and it's primarily just that structure that is visible. And then showing the sightlines, it will be visible from Main Street, but minimally. Looking at the criteria, we do find that it meets all of the SOI standards, as well as the downtown Littleton Historic Preservation Design Guidelines, and our criteria within the ULUC. Staff is recommending approval for this item, and that is the last bit.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to present?
Good evening, my name is Dale Irvin, I'm with Custom Decks. We're the contractor that's been asked to put this structure together. So I'm here to answer questions, if anybody has any. I don't think I have anything to say necessarily, I'm just here to answer any questions you folks may have.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Sarah or the applicant?
I do have a question about the sightlines. Could you bring that slide up again, please? So approximately how much of the structure will be visible from Main Street?
Are you talking about the Main Street side of it, I guess, the front side of it?
Yes, the Main Street line of sight.
Yeah, it's approximately, well, it's, I don't think it's more than 10. I think it's like, do you have the exact, I think it's nine foot eight tall, or do you know that for sure? I don't know that I have that information here. The bottom four or five feet of it will not be visible, there's a parapet wall kind of going around that building. So the bottom several feet will not be, you will see the top of the structure. I can't read that, though, I do have, I do have one of those here, though. It does show 10 to the top. So it looks like the side parapet wall is three feet tall, so it has seven feet exposed. The front or the Main Street side, it looks like it's going to be five feet exposed above that railing. But from the street, as you're walking, and I'm not super familiar with it, but I think as you're walking west on Main, it's on your right, is that correct? Okay, so as you look up, you can't see it from that sidewalk, because of the building. You'd have to be, because of line of sight, right? So I think driving, you would be able to look up, but mainly the opposite, sorry, the opposite side of the street, it would be more visible.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've got another, a follow-up question to that.
Yeah.
And, okay, so I just noticed, this one says south elevation. I'm trying to figure out how this is going to be oriented, so it'll be going east-west along the building? out how this is going to be oriented. So it'll be going east-west along the building?
Yep.
Okay.
And it doesn't cover that whole patio. I believe it covers about forty percent of that upper area there.
Okay.
So it's a little tough to see in this drawing. Of course, it's very small and my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, but it's the western, I don't know, thirty, thirty-five percent of that floor.
And it's a permanent structure. It's not a seasonal.
No, it's permanent.
Okay.
It's tan in color to match the tan trim on the building, so it kind of blends in with the building.
I have a question about if the owners are open to potentially, and I'd love to know thoughts. I was thinking about the other balcony and rooftop structures along downtown Maine. They're almost uniformly all black power powder coat. From overall perspective, through the continuity of the entire street, is that of concern? The tan is definitely highlighting the small accents that match the building in the stonework. So I see that, and it is quite different. It's, the rest along Main Street is black powder coated. Any, any thoughts on that?
That's a really good question. I hadn't thought about that.
Just for cohesion, yeah.
I think, are there, are there any rooftops in that block? I think there are a block or two to the, they're quite a ways to the west.
Yeah, I'd say the first one might be
Yeah.
A block over and across the street and then further down shift.
There's essentially a patio that is black that is built across Rio Grande or Sycamore at Grand Station.
Yeah. Street level or is that? And the far reel is actually black powder coated on the rear. And then Denver, yeah, it's black. That's also street level, though.
So there is one located, you can see on the aerial, Grand Station does have a black kind of powder coated metal structure in the very front of it. So that might be, I think, the closest one, and it's just like right across Sycamore. Sorry if that one has been mentioned.
I do think, though, across the street where the apartments are, there's a lot of tan, you know? Like, if you're looking up on either side of the street, it's, it's much more earthy tones than black, I think, in that block, other than Grand Station.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess my comment would be, I think that is an interesting question to think about continuity. But I wonder if we're more interested in, in having a structure that will blend into this building and look appropriate on this building and, you know, kind of go away, quite frankly, in the context of the building that it's on.
Yeah.
Rather than matching, you know? And it's, it's, it's not a guideline or anything as far as color goes to march, march it up the block or anything like that. But I think it's a very interesting question.
I, I agree with what Kim's saying, but I think that just based off of the pictures, because the majority of this building is red brick, the tan almost stands out more. And the red brick color might not be as visible if you're on the sidewalk across the way. I feel like the tan actually is like very loud.
Well, I'm also curious, too. What is the use of this structure? Is it for employees who work in this building, or will it be open to the public? And is there an estimate of how much it will be used?
It is for the employees of the building. It's a I believe the tenant is Continental Realty Group. And so I think it's for employees and when they have, I think they entertain investors from time to time and want to do something outside. I think that's the main purpose of it. It's not like a bar where it's open for, you know, the general public, but I suppose the general public could, you know, find their way into the offices and say, hey, can we go outside and look at your patio? But I don't, I think it's probably intended for their customers. Probably.
Well, I think with that, then, too, you know, if people aren't going to be using it all the time and it's tan and it blends in with the other tan elements of the building, I'm, I'm leaning towards tan.
Well, let's ask you, because it is red brick on the first level, on the historic facade that's, that's on the street and also on the addition. It is red brick and the tan are just accents. There are also white accents on the building. So how did you make the decision to go with tan versus to match the brick more closely?
Well, that's way above my pay grade. You have to talk to the designer, probably Kari, I think is probably the one. Actually, I believe it was the customer who decided to go with tan because they thought that would have the best chance of getting approved because it matched the accent on the building. I would love to take credit for it, but I, that wasn't me. I can tell you that it comes in five colors. It comes in black, white, gray. This is tan, or we call it adobe. It also comes in bronze. Honestly, I don't know that the, I've never spoke to the building owner. I have spoke to the tenant because he had quite a few questions about this. And so I met with him at length and I would probably guess that they would go with whatever color would be approved. I think they probably picked it because they thought it would have the best chance of getting approved because it blended in the best of the building. Because of the, you know, the horizontal tan lines there and then the horizontal beam that you'd have up top, the top of the structure, it seemed to make the most sense, I think, at the time. But you're right. I mean, I see, I see a lot of different colors there. I definitely see green and I can't tell if that's white or if that's tan or adobe above the, it looks like the door in the middle. There's a couple different colors of red. When you first brought up black, I thought that would actually probably look pretty good. Gray certainly wouldn't look good on that. But the adobe, the, the black, or the, like, say adobe, it's tan, the tan, the black, and maybe even, the white is really going to pop on that building. It's gonna, it's gonna stand out significantly, I think, probably more than any other color. But I'm not a color expert. I'm just really good at building these things and putting them up safely and making sure they don't go anywhere.
When you're talking about safety, is this already a deck up there? Is this already, like, meant to have things on top of it?
It is.
Okay. Then my question's down.
I do have one more question, and it's, it's more of a discussion point. When the, looking at the front of the original historic building, the facade is incredibly symmetrical. And this is on the addition, so it's not the historical piece, but it does disrupt the symmetry if you're looking straight up the midline of the building. I don't know, do we concern ourselves with that or anything?
I think that's a very good point.
I heard you mention the width. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, because it's only taking up how much of the front?
I, I think the owner or the, sorry, I said owner, the tenant wanted it the whole way. And I believe it's designed as a maximum square footage that can be covered. Does that sound right to you? I think we were told this is the biggest that it could possibly be up there by some kind of, I don't know what the guideline would be that would
Unless that's a building perspective, it may be from building code rather than planning and zoning, but I'm not sure on that.
Hmm. I don't know why it would be a building code, but maybe. I don't know. I, I assumed it was zoning and planning and zoning, but I wasn't part of that discussion. So I don't know.
Can I ask a separate question? Sarah, did I read somewhere that the second and third stories are not historic? So disrupting the facades of the second or third stories is not a disqualifier?
Correct. It has to kind of fit within the entire structure. But yeah, it's a fact, since it's on the nonhistoric additions, it has a more minimal effect on the kind of integrity of the building.
I think it's going to stand out like a sort of, honestly.
I don't have that information for you.
Okay.
One thing to keep in mind, that front exposed beam that, that'll be facing Main Street, that's only an eight inch profile. It is pretty, pretty narrow, for what it's worth. The posts that's, that run vertically to support it are a six inch profile. So it's significantly smaller than, say, those, those brick soldiers that run up the side of the building. But I couldn't tell you about how much the, the tenant has leased, how much of their space, if they have that whole patio. I haven't been up there myself, so I don't know. I have not. I was brought, I was asked to come because there might be some questions on attachment. And so I'm here from, I guess, from my company as a structural expert on how this will be attached and, and held up if you guys have any questions. And I apologize for that.
I do have a comment on that. So would it be attached to the building?
Yes.
Okay. So essentially, if you, you couldn't remove it without damaging the exterior of the building?
It will be attached to the brick, but if you didn't want it over time, you could certainly remove it and the, the brick would be in, you know, it would still be there. We're not, we're not tearing out the brick or cutting away the brick to set this into.
Can you possibly build the patio separate from the brick so that it could be, like, with a space gap? I know that that's been approved on prior ones, so that it's not damaging to the building if it was chosen to be removed?
You could put posts against the brick so that you weren't attaching to the brick. That's a possibility.
Well, just looking at the nineteen ninety-seven survey, this particular building had the step back addition at that time. And in nineteen ninety-seven, it was still considered to be in excellent condition. And national register eligibility was yes, and contributing to the district was yes. And as far as the integrity goes, one of the things that's, that's interesting about this building is that, that this is the, the way to approach an addition to a historic structure. I mean, this is, that's a pretty massive addition, three stories, but it is stepped back. It's nicely done. And, and the impression that you get from walking down Main Street in front of the building and even across the street where you can see the addition is, you know, is, is the old Hunt Building, the, which was the Red Comet.
The fire extinguisher.
Yeah, the fire extinguishers and, and it was in a car dealership at one time. And so it's, it's very faithful to that. But it is also, you know, it's a, it's a moderate addition and it reflects the fact that, you know, downtown Littleton doesn't exist in a museum diorama. I mean, there's, there, this is a real town and there are buildings behind these, these historic buildings. So, you know, this, this is a building that is of very high integrity. And even with a, a nonhistoric addition on it, that, that was done very sensitively. I think one of the questions is, you know, you don't, you don't want to get into a situation where you're kind of nibbling away at that integrity with, you know, this roof structure here and, and another roof structure over here and maybe another kind of structure. But you have to be careful about that. And so one question would be, can you, you know, solve the tenant's problem without, you know, a, a permanent structure that you can see from Main Street? Is that possible? Would that be something to, to look at?
I'm not aware of a way to do that. It would look nice. You could, you know, potentially maybe do like a retractable awning, but that would, in my opinion, look pretty horrific up there. You know, I think this is a, I, I don't know how to do it.
Does anyone have more questions or do we want to move forward with the public comment? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I am going to now open the public comment, the portion of the public hearing at seven twelve. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? All right, Pam, you want to come on up?
Hi, I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. I have the luxury of being a citizen and neighbor, but I, I feel it's very, I mean, you have to follow the rules. Given that, though, I'm going to say, from the drawings, I just don't understand what this change is and I don't understand the impact of it. If it, I mean, if it, so one thing I don't like is, to me, the drawings are not very clear. I would request, you know, in the future, the staff make something really, really obvious so that I know, you know, people like me who are not familiar with these kind of drawings can see the impact of the change with colors and drawings really easily and not just the structural sketches or something like that. I would, I would like that. Even if it was just something quick and dirty, I, I think folks like me would understand better. I'm curious that the applicant sent the structural engineer, not the design engineer for this meeting. You all should have access to that person on our behalf. And so I, I don't like that. Nothing against the structural engineers who I love, but the design guys should be here to stand up for what they did. My comment is that this is a critical building in Littleton. The history of this, the look of it, where it is, is really critical. And along Main Street, we already have buildings that, to me, compromise the look of downtown. I do understand, I think, the criteria about individual buildings, but my comment has been about the integrity of the district. And I believe that that's accomplished by design standards and guidelines, which we are not strong enough here. We need those design standard and guidelines. We used to have them downtown. They talked about the impact of a change on the surrounding buildings and whether they were in keeping with that character. That is what you should be considering for this application as well as the changes to the specific building. And I do not think this contributes to downtown. I think it takes away. Again, I have the luxury of, you know, for one thing, I don't quite understand the change, I think. But I, I'm concerned about the cumulative effect of a whole bunch of little changes, quote, quote, like this, that don't add to the district. They take away from the district as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion in a second to discuss?
You have to close the public hearing.
Sorry. Just making sure. Is there anybody else who, who wants to speak? Okay, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing at seven fifteen.
May I ask a question? Does the commission have the ability or authority to invite the design engineer to come back or to come? Do we, can we make that invitation?
It would be a motion to continue to a date certain and direct staff to have the appropriate parties here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that we should also ask the tenant to be here to know what's, how much space they could take up if we could even it out or not. I think there just needs to be more people here who can answer our questions.
I would, well, I would say if we took it to a vote tonight, I would probably oppose it. And another point I want to make is that this is not a structure or an addition that is intended to help a business maintain, business maintain its ability to generate income. This is purely for the pleasure of employees, which, in my mind, makes it a less critical addition to support. It's not like we're not supporting businesses downtown if we oppose this. Having said that, I would make a motion to continue to adate certain, the August meeting, and that we instruct staff to invite the design engineer and the owner or tenant to come and be available to answer questions.
May we also ask for a line of sight that would indicate how apparent the changes would be? And this is, this is a stretch ask, so let me know if it's not appropriate. But this is the first building you see as you cross the bridge west. And at that elevation, the upper stories are much more visible. So I would love to see maybe a line of sight that we could really get a sense for when you're up there and you're swooping into downtown, how visible those would be.
So I think, do we need a second, and then we can discuss more the information that we'd like staff to, okay? Does anybody want to second Jason's motion?
I second it.
Okay, so let's go ahead then and discuss what we need to see from staff and the applicant to make a decision. So I've heard we'd like the design, the designer and the tenant to come. We'd also like information on the sightline coming down Littleton Boulevard as it turns into Main Street, moving west, to see what that will look like as you're entering.
In the elevation?
Yes.
And I think they should be prepared to answer questions on color, like what the options are.
Yeah, like maybe even samples of all of the different color options, the five that were discussed.
I, I also think that, I know that there have been approvals for patios or additions that are not attached to the building, so it wouldn't damage the building if it's like an inch off. I believe that is what HPV did, so it's not going to mess, if there are options on how we can make sure that this doesn't interfere with the structural integrity of the building and the brick.
Well, just a couple of points. I think people have raised really interesting points tonight, and pretty cogent points. And Jason, to your point about, we do try to encourage businesses, and we are, a part of our purview or our task is to, you know, ensure the economic health of Littleton. But having said that, you know, a business, if you're operating a business downtown in a historic structure, I mean, that is an envelope that you have to operate in. And, you know, you can't do everything that you might think that you need to for a business within a historic structure. You have to, you have to, you know, understand the limitations of that. I think, Lizzie, to your point about what does it look like? You know, you always think of that, the bridge coming in from the courthouse. What does it look like? And it would be extremely visible. You're absolutely right. And, and I do, I am sorry, and I'm kind of surprised that there weren't design people that, who could answer some of these very reasonable questions that are coming up. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments or information that we'd like to see before we move to a vote? Okay, I'm going to open up a vote.
Just to clarify, the date certain would be August 19th?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries.
Okay. So with that, that closes the public hearing portion of the meeting. So we'll move to the comments and reports section. Community development staff, do you have any reports?
Nothing at this time.
All right, city attorney or city clerk?
No, thank you.
Well, as you can see, we're going to have two hearings next month, so there will be a meeting.
Thank you. And then board members, any updates from anyone here? All right.
Mrs. Miriam Steele, don't you have an update?
Best wishes to you. All right. All right. With no further business, I adjourn this meeting at 7:23. We do have a study session following this meeting, so let's take a five-minute break, and then we will be back.
All right, so I am gonna open the study session of the Historical Preservation Commission at seven thirty three. We just have one item on the agenda if you wanna kick us off, Sarah.
Absolutely. So this is the kind of second study session for us to discuss the strategic plan with a goal tonight of starting to draft our goals. Gonna give a little bit of just the overview, so we're gonna do a little bit of recap. Talk about guiding principles and some of the plans and then start kind of that goal discussion. So just to recap from last time, the timeline right now is to develop this starting as we said last month and then through November. That can of course be changed as we go if we need to extend it to allow for more discussion, great. If we do get faster, great. Kind of however y'all's process, y'all's plan. Wanting to create, and this is kind of a little bit of a verification for me as well. So we want the five-year strategic plan to include goals and measurable objectives, but in terms of that kind of work program, action item situation, we're wanting to do more of a one-year work program in kind of that yearly prioritization of the goals and objectives. Does that sound kind of in line with where we were at last time?
Great.
I think so.
Awesome. So wanted to kind of bring up the guiding principles. This is from Envision Littleton. And has kind of talked about in the plan, the guiding principles really look at the values identified by the community and served as the foundation for the vision for the comprehensive plan. But it does kind of help provide that reference point for Littleton kind of when we're making decisions. They reflect the major themes or areas of focus for achieving, and this is again specific to the comp plan, but can be kind of broadly applied to other plans as well, and it's looking at kind of achieving that desired vision that emerged based on input by stakeholders. And that's kind of the part why I wanted to kind of bring these into this is these were developed after resident input. These are kind of things that our residents are find value in and kind of creating those goals and objectives in relation to those can, though this is a kind of internal document for the for the board, it kind of helps anchor that in that kind of broader resident feedback. So, a little bit ironically, anchored is the first, did not mean to do that, but it worked. And I'm just gonna kind of quickly read the kind of bold kind of statements from it. I can also pull them up if we need to throughout the evening tonight. But so for anchored is even in the face of potentially significant demographic change, Littleton remained anchored by a firm belief among its residents and leaders of what makes this a truly special place. So kind of again talking about that character, talking about the kind of feel of the city and maintaining that as they, as we do face change, as we do move forward. Littleton will continue to be authentic and comfortable for both residents and guests. Again, kind of maintaining that small-town feel, that kind of what makes Littleton distinct within the region. Littleton will be an increasingly connected and accessible place, and this is really talking about kind of that physical and mobility standpoint. And so, a lot of this is is connected, as was kind of mentioned earlier in the evening, that kind of bike pad does have a we are moving more towards that need, but let's figure out kind of how to balance those things as well. Littleton will always be a community of active people who make the most of their city's cultural and natural resource abundance. I think this one really fits in in terms of cities cultural and kind of how does that start to apply for preservation kind of broadly within the city and kind of, I said this is kind of an opportunities for education and kind of how do we bring residents along on this kind of program. And then Littleton will remain engaged and civic-minded in all matters affecting the direction of priorities of city government and the community. And that's really talking about including stakeholders, including engaging with our residents. So that may be something to kind of think of in terms of goals moving forward, in terms of education, or kind of teaching residents about what historic preservation is, the importance of it, and then broadly the history and culture of the city as well. So it's kind of those, that two could be twofold and kind of how they might apply. So that's kind of those just five, or yep, five. And so when we're talking about the goals and kind of moving forward, it may be helpful to kind of keep those in the back of your mind. And again, we can bring them up and I can read in more detail if we need to. Any other kind of questions right now before I keep going before the, this is all the prep material, I guess? And again, we can refer kind of to the Envision Littleton Comp Plan as well as the comprehensive economic development strategy. These are previous plans that did include engagement that could help as ideas for goals or objectives. And then this is kind of the discussion page, if you will. Some kind of ideas that are pretty common in terms of goals. We can look at maybe looking at it more of a broad topic area type of goal. Often those include preservation, education, and then development and training, and that could be for members of the HPC or other officials within the city. Again, really heavily influenced often by a guiding principles or a vision. And looking at those objectives and action items, those are gonna be your more specific measurable. So when you have a goal of preservation, that's hard to kind of fully wrap your head around. Those objectives is where we start kind of getting more of that detail. So tonight, we are looking at those kind of broad umbrella things that aren't really at this point seems like it's something to kind of measure or base on, but it is that kind of overarching, this is what we're looking at. Here's kind of how we can get to it. Those are kind of the next steps. So tonight, it's really that kind of big-picture goal of of historic preservation in Littleton is kind of what we're looking at. So that's why sometimes they can be really broad topic areas. And they do tend to be more static across the life of a plan. It's not to say that they can't be amended or changed, but those are generally the kind of pillars that things are on, and then your objectives or your action items may shift as we gain more information, as we go through the process of carrying out the plan, or as we finish other, so say Littleton Boulevard, that plan gets wrapped up, there could be items out of that that could be added to this plan and kind of an overall idea. So that's where those changes could come into play, and your goals seem to be a little bit more kind of set across that life of the plan. So any questions? Any, do we wanna just start by, if you guys have any thoughts on goals, we can start throwing them out. I can guide it a little bit.
Well, I don't wanna lose what we got last month. And I know that sometimes if we don't like remind ourselves what we actually said last month, we lose it. And it was much more tactical than where we are right now, Sarah, so just indulge me. But just for everyone and whoever is keeping notes and trying to keep us on task, Paige had some really, really great tactical suggestions, and I can read them out, or you can read them out.
And if you want to, that's fine.
Sure. Internal training on the Secretary of Interiors guidelines, the Mid-Mond Mile signs, changes to code, add to the Littleton legacy list, maybe an event to mark the Mid-Mond Mile, and then plaques and signage. And then Kim followed up to remind us that if there's one thing we need to get done, it's the preservation plan. And so we can talk very lofty goals, but if we don't sort of keep an eye on that North Star of a preservation plan, we're gonna lose it. And then she also recommended focusing on an updated ordinance. So just to keep those top of mind, I think it's important. And you said you were gonna share the North Glen ordinance, plan with us as an example.
Yes, I put that in the staff communication, but I can bring it up here as well. Yeah, I was kind of at the bottom, so apologies if it was, if that is not a great location for things. I can kind of shift that around if that's not as easy to find.
Was a link, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, correct. It wasn't an attachment, it was links. But I can pull it up right here.
In the agenda for the news.
The staff communication should, so it should've been the first page.
Just bring it up online.
This is where I always find the links, there are links from the agenda.
Oh, okay. It's here, I think. It's that. And then, yeah, I love this, I like the paper copy.
It would've been in the email from Wendy.
It should've been in probably, I would assume, the attachment, but I'm not quite sure.
Oh, I guess we'll have to. So, I believe it's here. So.
There it is.
Yeah.
It was buried.
Well, it's kind of funny because for us as staff, that staff communication is very like front and center.
Really?
So then to see it on your end, where it's not really that front and center.
Legislation text? I would never have gone to a back end that says legislation text.
That's interesting. I guess I haven't looked at it from a commissioner perspective, because from us, it's like, you know, kind of must fill this out, let's get this going.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Fascinating.
And so I, I appreciate that knowledge, so thank you. We will see.
Right.
Yeah, but it's not like.
The most important doc they prepare for us each month.
Well, that's, well, I wouldn't say the most important.
Is something headed legislation text.
But that, but that tells me why during the prior meeting, you may not have known of our recommendation to continue.
Oh, that was front and center. No, the staff report, yeah. Staff report is a very prominent link in the agenda.
For real. That was front and center. Yeah. Okay, but there there should be those cover pages for each one too. Okay.
Okay, so we legislate.
That's interesting. Okay.
We get multiple links and. So they have kind of the same information on the first page, the agenda.
The same session, just like legislation text.
Oh, I didn't know we could scroll over here. And then one, you can scroll down along, what is it? And that's where the communication is. Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Why is it called legislation text?
So on the.
That's so misleading.
Yeah, normally I, yeah.
I think, oh, that's for lawyers.
Normally, I open the agenda, the agenda has hot links.
Right. I know, sometimes I just don't, I don't know what I'm reading, yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know about that.
What'd you say, Amy?
Normally, I just open the agenda because the links are built into the agenda.
Are all there.
But these are not.
And it's easier to maneuver through a smaller document.
Now we know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you hit the ID number, that's where that first page is, and then ID number, then legislation text, yeah. Okay, that's interesting, so.
Now we know. Yeah.
All right, we all learned something.
Speaking of education.
This is a cool building on this strategic plan. Is this the Buddhist temple that's up there?
It's, it's pretty funky, isn't it?
Oh, no. This is, so that one down on the bottom is Saint Stephen's Lutheran Church. Um, I think Charles Hartling was the architect for that one. It was one of the, it's the second National Register property in North Glen, that Stonehocker Farmhouse, which is the oldest building. And this is, that top right one is from a neighborhood called Deza Estates, which is actually pretty similar to Rapper Hill Hills in the style of architecture.
You were, I think you mentioned that last time. I'm gonna have to go up there and find that.
Yeah.
That's cool.
So yeah, this is the one we did for North Glen. I definitely had some learning experiences with this, and you'll see kind of a little bit what I mean, but pretty simple, kind of goes over just an introduction. We can do vision statement or the guiding principles, and then goals and objectives, and the work program. So it's just kind of quick introduction as to the program's history, the vision statement they developed. And then it goes into kind of the goals and objectives, and it was about three different goals. And just kind of, they went very simple and kind of those broad topic areas, and then they added in kind of the objectives under it. And then gets into the work program. And this is the part that I would maybe a little bit learning from it. If you notice, a lot of Xs on multiple years. And things were really broken down to minutia in terms of action item. I don't think things need to be that detailed. So I think kind of this is a great, really comprehensive kind of work program. But we may not need to go quite so, it was like instead of the process of designating Deza, it was like, okay, we're gonna pull out the engagement portion, pull out as a separate step. It just makes it a little bit more cumbersome. It's all part of the plan, it still is there, but it just makes these kind of action items and kind of sheet this work program a little bit more cumbersome. And as you can see, we did a lot of just, these are ongoing every year, and then maybe some of the ongoing stuff gets pulled out more as policies isn't quite the right word, but it's just kind of those ongoing activities. As part of the HPC, we feel that these are important to kind of continue with on a yearly basis to kind of a lot of, and a lot of theirs was the outreach and education, so that kind of continual engagement.
It was work that had to be done.
Correct.
To to plot it out all out like that. But I guess is your point, it didn't need to be documented in the plan like this?
Yeah, so it's a little, it's just a little bit more kind of cumbersome from a use and kind of to some of the points, I think it was made last meeting. When you see all of these Xs too, this just seems like a lot of work. It's overwhelming. It's not as easily used of a document. It is incredibly helpful, and they have used it, and they were able to kind of check some things off, but I think from kind of my perspective, it is not as, quite as easy of a document to use and read as I think I would've liked or kind of initially envisioned, but it did work for them. And so if we get to something that we want a lot more detailed, that is totally, that is like, it's kind of what works for you guys best. That was just kind of my experience with it. But as much detail as makes y'all comfortable, especially with only doing kind of that one year at a time, it might kind of bring that overwhelm down a little bit also. This is the full five years, and we kind of each year it shifted by date, and it just kind of keeps growing and going. But yeah, and we actually had, and I don't think it was, has not been pulled online yet, but there, they did start a kind of another table that was the successes. Which I do think is always great to kind of put in.
Yeah.
It's just a reminder of what you have been able to accomplish, and that's always nice to see, and it's also say resident wanted to see it, he gets to kind of again, or taking, to your point, taking it to council and showing this is what our priorities are, and this is what we accomplished last year.
Outreach and education is doing exactly that.
Yep.
Good job, Sarah. Thank you.
And also, like, in a five-year plan, I mean, that is overwhelming. It's like you know what you're gonna do Tuesday, you know, June twenty eighth, you know, five years straight down.
Yes. Absolutely. Yeah.
It's very comprehensive.
I think that that, you know, certainly our first whack at this is going to, you know, I think it'll have all kinds of goals and things like that that are pretty much carved in stone, but then, you know, our strategies and our tactics, they probably will change over time, and they will evolve. And there will be items on our work plan or something that that we want a lot of detail on, but not on others. And and so, you know, that's, I think that it can evolve and grow with us. You know, and suit, I mean, this is really to suit our needs. This is guiding what we are doing.
Sure. Absolutely. And kind of to the point, Jaycee, you made with like the preservation plan, once that gets again, and that could lead to other updates for this too. So that's kind of, again, that kind of living document aspect of it.
Yeah, and then I'll have a lot of moving parts that you'll need to, at some point, you know, the lists are gonna be long, but they don't have to be long initially.
Did they produce a product? Was one of the objectives a product? Like, we're tackling a preservation plan?
Yeah, so there, kind of the, probably the big successes is this kind of first one. The inclusion of the Deza Estates, resource survey for designation, educate residents on the process of that and implications. And so we pretty much got through. We designated, we locally designated Deza Estates, we did the historic resource survey for it. We updated the ordinance, that was actually something, that was the first piece. North Glen did not allow for historic districts until the beginning of twenty twenty-three.
Wow.
When we brought forward and re-repealed and then redid the entire, kind of the HPC ordinance to include historic districts.
Cool, so there's some urgency here.
Yeah, that was, yeah, so we, so it was, it was pretty successful. It's, Deza Estates, I think, was a bit lucky. I think you had a lot of people who were really passionate about that neighborhood. One of our HPC members lived in that neighborhood. So that stuff was a bit, bit easier. I'm trying to think of some of the other. We did apply and received a grant for a survey plan for the city as well. So some of those kind of, so they were definitely more focused on growing the preservation program. It's not quite as established as it is here in Littleton, because the only locally designated structure before Deza Estates was that farmhouse, which the city actually owns. So doesn't have quite, so they weren't as involved in kind of the COA kind of standard processes just yet. Because they didn't really have to go through that process for the city owned, and they weren't really making changes to the exterior, so. But yeah, so that was kind of some of what was going on, and.
So where would you put, produce preservation plan in a scheme like you've laid out here?
Going with kind of these.
Is it an objective under preservation?
Yeah, so it would be probably preservation. I would probably add another objective. It could be a kind of under that first one, but that kind of broad of understanding what needs to be completed for the city as a whole. They were definitely kind of that step behind, so I think some of that survey stuff was really what we needed, they kind of needed to get done beforehand. So preservation plan wasn't as much of a priority yet. But it would be kind of more under that kind of hard preservation. Now, engagement aspects of it could be included under education and outreach, if that's kind of how you guys wanna end up dividing things out. But yeah, it's, and some of these you'll find, like, there's components of a preservation plan that could probably fall under every goal you have. And sometimes it's about just figuring out what works, where works best, what makes the most sense. But ultimately, as long as it's in there as a priority, sometimes that's the easiest.
And also, would it be appropriate to, in, this is not a task per se, but could you prioritize or, you know, well, prioritize certain areas that might be more at risk than others? And, you know, one, one would be Littleton Boulevard. Can we say, we're gonna focus on Littleton Boulevard?
Needs. Correct. Correct, absolutely. Yeah, y'all, since we kind of know already, and city council has prioritized that as well, that'd be a great one to kind of call out and note as like, this is, we're looking at this because we think it is, has more need at the moment. It has more pressing need. So things can definitely be lined up that way for sure.
So on that note, to pick up on a public comment tonight about a historic overlay, we could put in our strategic plan that we wanted to work to produce a historic overlay for Littleton.
If I, if I may.
You have a frown on your face.
No, not, not so much that, but I don't know if, I couldn't make the last meeting, so I apologize. But I'm not sure that, that we gave you an update as to what state council discussed for the Littleton Boulevard item in general. In June, we had a conversation with state council, and state council agreed with staff's recommendation to fully, to work towards fully budgeting for a more comprehensive Littleton Boulevard plan. So we were currently working on that RFP instead of trying to kind of rush and get there right now. Instead of trying to kind of rush and get there right now. We were uh, we approached city council with the request that it'd be nice to do this as one effort instead of having to break it up based on the amount of funding we have now versus what we may get in the future. Instead, we requested that we do it all at one. Um, so that budget request is in, uh, we'll know more about that here in the future. Um, city council, very strong um, support for this. So it will, I have faith that it will be funded at some level, I don't know at what level yet. Um, but the only reason I frowned is that um, you know, an overlay to me might be one of the outputs that we get from that Littleton Boulevard study, a recommendation. But I don't know as of just yet, if the overlay will be the recommendation or if a different means of preservation will be the recommendation. Um, my guess is it'll probably be an overlay because it makes enough sense and we've got some historic work. Um, that's really kind of leaned into that idea. And the district, the historic assets are split, are spread far enough apart, that it's probably will be an overlay. Um, I just don't necessarily wanna preclude other creative solutions. So my um, you can just recommendation would be overlay or similar preservation method or something like that.
So we can still tackle the item, just not be so prescriptionative.
That's, yeah.
Given the fact that another part of the city apparatus is um tackling a plan.
Yeah, and you of course will be involved in.
Right.
Uh, the planning effort.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, this document, you know, if, if we, if you did want to put in overlay, it can be potentially amended in the future if, if we gave you, uh, or you know, the, the whole team gave you a rationale for why maybe something else would be a different solution. So you get absolutely put in, I just, like I said, didn't necessarily wanna preclude other options, but sure.
Carrie, when you say it's getting all done at the same time, what is the all-dones? What does that mean, all of it?
Yeah, so prior to having this conversation with city council, staff um, had to kick around a lot of ideas as to how to um, get all of the goals that we had heard from uh historic preservation, planning commission and city council into kind of um, to a point of, of conclusion, right? And uh, so C sta, so staff looked at where we could pull some funds. And we had a little bit my here, a little bit my there, et cetera. But um, those funds wouldn't have been enough to do a comprehensive effort. So we would have had to prioritize one or two items and then probably have come back with another request for funding. So in this way, um, we're hoping to be able to, to work on kind of the five items that we really wanna work on. Historical preservation, um, economic development, transportation at a high level. Probably not to the level that um, you're seeing with uh Project Downtown. Um, but I guess if we get a lot of funding, maybe that changes the mindset. Um, land use, and we've got some code items that we wanna take a look at as well. Um, yeah, there's even a potential for that overlay to be more, to, you know, either have two or have it blended with a land use component. So um, and then I'm missing one, housing, thank you, and housing. So we'd like to try to tackle all five of those items in one document.
Or with, with the request for additional money from council, right?
Correct.
It means delaying till you get appropriated. And then doing it all next year, is that what you're getting at?
That's what we're proposing, city council wants to move fast on it as well, so.
So to emphasize, what are you thinking?
Money.
So uh, the budget cycle, um, or the budget gets approved typically in October.
So would the money already be allocated for this or would we have to re, is that what you're saying? So like in October, the money would be there or would it not be there?
So, so we would.
Do we start in January?
Have they asked for it?
Uh, but.
It's head budget request.
Yeah, so, so we made the request. Um, city council really wants to move on this, so they have indicated to us that sometime in September, they would have probably a pretty good idea of at what level they can fund. And instead of us waiting until final adoption, they would be willing to, for us to go out for RFP before final adoption.
Okay.
Um, with the intent to try to get somebody on board even before um, the end of twenty-four. So, because we do have some funds in, in twenty-four that could be allocated to this as well.
But you could have.
Yeah, sorry. What's the funding amount requested?
I'd rather not get into too much in the way of specifics because it is just a budget request right now. And there's a, a number of discussions that need to take place and I don't want to, you know, shoot. Yeah, you get, get anybody's hopes on like a really high number at this point, but.
Okay.
But we'll, we should be able to roll out some figures hopefully, hopefully September-ish.
Okay, I have a question. What if they say no to the budget request?
Uh, it's highly doubtful.
They wouldn't have been signaling this way. They're signaling to you that, yeah.
They're saying, go ahead and start.
Well, they, uh, city council talked without, you know, hard and fast numbers, but they were very supportive, so.
You think, you say you think you're on the same planet with city council as far as the action.
I think we'll get some strong funding, but I don't, yeah, I, unfortunately, I don't have a great answer right now because I, we haven't had, you know, city council hasn't had those conversations yet. So I hesitate to say, you know, I, I don't wanna pin either myself in a corner or potentially city council in a corner, so.
I'd like though that you're moving and um, moving on the assumption that yes, we are gonna do this, so.
Strong, very strong support, yes.
So given that update, thank you very much. It sounds to me like our plan needs to acknowledge the likelihood that this would happen and then be really clear on how we participate in that.
And what, and what our goals are.
What our goals are for that.
Exactly.
Piece, for the historic piece of that.
I think that's great.
So it would almost help us stagger our timing if we know that that's what the cadence events will be coming up.
That's a good point, yeah, it's a really good point.
It is, it is July and you're talking about these, these requests for like September and October, budget approved. So, yeah, I think by the time we actually get pen to paper on this and hold it in our hands, we'll know.
I, yeah, I may be able to provide you with a much more concrete um, idea of what that looks like by, you know, later this fall.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Certainly.
First, what should our shorthand be for describing what, the, the product that you just uh, shared with us?
Yeah, we've been calling it the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan.
Subarea plan, okay.
Which as I mentioned, it would have all those components within, you know, is, is our proposed outcomes.
And to your point, it is taking a comprehensive kind of approach, but yeah, it's that kind of a small. Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense. But yes, I think, and that's kind of was our goal too in kind of those five areas. Cause it really does kind of look at that area pretty holistically, which would help.
Help everybody.
Yep, cause preservation is not in a vacuum, so it's kind of, having those other components really helps kind of guide.
And would this plan be just Littleton Boulevard or would it take in to like a, a couple blocks around the corridor or?
Most likely it would be broader than just the, the thin corridor.
Okay.
Um, we've, we pondered a lot of, I mean, uh, with historical preservation as well, kind of what should, how can we right-size that? Ultimately came to the conclusion that um, we would work with the consultant team and hearing out maybe that first round of engagement prior to finalizing boundaries. Um, also kind of depended on, this was back when we were like, how much money are we going to have, kind of a thing? Um, and so it was, it was really a moving target. So we haven't finalized uh, boundaries, but I do believe it'll be more than just the corridor itself. There'll probably be some space on either side, maybe taking into account some of those commercial pockets as well.
Well, one thing that I noticed that um, broad topic areas, preservation, education and development training. Um, you know, one of the things that, that I think that we can say with mid-mod. I, I think a lot of people are generally really into the concept, yeah, yeah, I, I love mid-mod. But it is the educational piece of it, well, what kind of makes mid-mod? Um, and is it, you know, the, the context that it's in? Is it, does it, you know, does it require a context of setbacks, um, heights, things like that? Um, you know, those, the things that actually go into mid-mod, explaining what that is. And I just, you throw out the term mid-mod, but it's, it's really Littleton Boulevard. It's not, um.
It's its own thing.
Yeah, it is its own thing, it's not like downtown.
But I also think too, um, there are some, a lot of people who I think when they think of historic preservation, only think about Victorian.
Yeah, the red.
You know, and people are like, oh, nineteen seventy, like, I, I'm sure my mom would say this, nineteen seventy was thirty years ago. You know, even though it's not, but it feels that way, you know? So I think there's also some education for people in the community that there's value in these structures that aren't necessarily our oldest structures.
That they, they tell a story, there's value in that story.
And it's, it's, it's hard, you're absolutely right, you know, you, you see some of these and I think, I have shoes that old.
Right.
But um, it, you know, that's, that is, it's, it's always, you know, you have to understand, you know, like that it's not necessarily your childhood or not necessarily, you know, your parents' childhood or not necessarily turn of the century that constitutes historic. And especially when you look at the broader context of Littleton. You know, Little, Littleton, um, uh, little farm town and historic downtown. And then the, the post-war boom, you know, that, when you get right down to it, is Littleton.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, that's when the big numbers start to, to crop up.
Mm-hmm. So I'm gonna take us a step back. How, what are we thinking in terms of goals? Do we want them to be more specific or do we want kind of a broad topic area approach? Cause that I think will kind of start to guide things a little bit.
I mean, I really like how this plan is laid out, that there's kind of those overarching, kind of more static goals that we're interested in moving towards, but then also having some measurable objectives underneath those goals that are, that can be changed or can be added to or, you, goals that basically, strategic goals that tie into the overarching plan.
Yeah, that strategy that, that's going to get you to the goal.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say the, on that point, the most important pages from the Northland Plan for us to tackle are three and four. Which is using the three broad goals and the, those bullets underneath become where we really believe we can produce something uh, or change something.
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
What are the bullets under those three broad categories?
We love this word, this, this goal, how are we gonna get there?
Right.
I mean, I love that.
Mm-hmm. And of course, the, the overarching goals could change, but I kind of envision them as, they generally would stay about the same.
They, they better. We shouldn't be changing goals every year.
In your presentation, you had education as the goal, but in Northland, you called it outreach and education. And I like the addition of outreach.
I like that too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which we, we had done at one point.
Yeah, I mean, outreach is good and, and, you know, outreach, um, it's always, always necessary and always changing. Because the folks that you reach with outreach, you know, they might not be here and there might be new ones.
Right, and there's new people in their place.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, you know, our own preservation sphere is evolving, you know, to consider how, the, the difference, or, or consider where we are now versus five years ago before the historic district was in place and.
Yeah.
Before we had this, you know, kind of wherewithal to, to tackle Littleton Boulevard, so.
Mm-hmm.
That we, we need to, uh, outreach is an ongoing piece, that's what I'm trying to say, so. Right, so it sounds like in terms of goals, this kind of method works. Are there any topic areas you would add or delete?
In terms of internal development, I mean, I've been thinking of that as, you know, training for, for us. You know, out, outreach is training for people not on the commission.
Mm-hmm.
Training for us and what resources for, for staff.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Yes, yeah, and internal, and part of it too was um, connecting with those other uh, kind of groups that may have an effect. So Planning Commission as well as City Council. Um, to really create, and I think Northland City, not, sorry, Littleton City Council is definitely a little bit more, I think, a lo, farther along in understanding that connection with historic preservation and the importance of it because this is a much, as I said, it's more established.
We've done a lot of work.
So it's, I don't think as critical, but still important, still kind of having that communication with them. And in terms of Planning Commission, land use can affect historic preservation, so as needed, if kind of things pop up. Um, it's always a good group to also kind of understand. Um, and then also, kind of for y'all, it's that, it's that training as well. Um, it's that kind of learning, um, taking advantage of resources. Um, one of the things Northland was really working towards is this kind of equity, diversity, inclusion and kind of understanding how that fits within preservation, that's also why they kind of put it under there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's kind of where that one is and it is really about not only growing your knowledge but growing other groups' knowledge, knowledge that is kind of within the city as well.
What about, how does a, an affinity group like HLI fit into that? Is that a resource for us, do we need to partner more with them, or, you know, what, what do you think?
My initial thought is that they would definitely fall more under outreach and education just because they are that external group, so it could be outreach to connect with them, to start to kind of.
That we partner with them to.
And even going so far as partnering on outreach events for the community as well.
Kind of like the tours.
Sure.
Or the J D Hill birthday party.
Yeah.
That was so fun.
Yeah, so it's, it's things like that, so it's that kind of outreach to them specifically and then outreach utilizing them, is kind of how I see it.
Yeah, use them as a resource.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Another one I think is, um, what's the one, um, Doko Momo?
Yes.
Like the presentation that they did about Sternberg was so interesting.
It was cute, yeah.
I don't know, it's like, it's a group that is um, interested in mid-century modern architecture and preserving it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I.
Not a Littleton, something longer than that.
It's a nationwide, yeah, but there is a chapter in, like here in the metro area.
Yeah.
But I, I noticed them on, somewhere on here.
I'm trying to, I can't remember what the, the role stands for.
Oh, utilize information gathered from DESA Estates Historic Resources.
They came and talked to us one time last year, it was cute.
Yeah, Doko Momo is so great, you don't even need to know what it stands for.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fun, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but even just things like that too, um.
It's the, and that's a resource, that, you know, that, they, yeah, I mean, we can use them and they can spread our message.
Right, and HLI I think used them to do another Sternberg, Sternberg thing too, so. But if we could partner with them to put that on or something like that, that would be good.
How did we get them to come talk to us last time about uh, Geneva Village and?
Well, I think Rick is, Rick knows, or no?
They may have reached out on their own, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, because it was around the time that we were, like, uh, Geneva Village was coming up, so I think they probably reached out.
Well, I, one of the people who presented to us is in, on HLI.
Yeah.
Timber.
Yeah, drives an old Cadillac and parks it illegally in my parking lot all the time. And I had to think about towing her everywhere.
I think it could be interesting for us when we're thinking about the guiding principles and how these two entities and what we're talking about, it sounds like a lot of connectedness and engagement with being connected, which is interesting too, the guiding principles. So that could slot nicely into a really well-nested goal that ties to two guidelines and shows that we're super aligned with.
Or goals, I think maybe.
Goals. Exactly.
Yeah.
But that, that, that were tied into the envisioned plan under the guiding principles.
Oh, okay, sure.
So that we're, we're like super aligned, which probably would give us more momentum if we needed to ask for anything cause it ties up to the big plan.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I love the, the, that you mentioned planning commission. Because um, planning commission, you know, has a great deal of effect or on what we, what we get and what we do. And really, the vice versa should be true. And um, if we could have more, you know, just engagement or, or understanding and I think that that would be very, very positive, it would help all around.
With the planning commission members?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Or even just like general updates of what they're doing, or would you rather work directly with the Planning Commission?
I I would like to, I mean, I don't wanna work with them every month.
Sure.
Yeah, we've we had, we we had a few joint study sessions.
Yeah, we we did.
Exactly, that was informative.
Yeah, it was extremely uh informative and we worked on things together, um, like, do you remember with the design guidelines?
Yeah.
That we didn't, it didn't, we didn't take it to fruition, but we worked together. And um and and Planning Commission and H P B at that time worked hand in hand to, you know, do the historic district. So it's it's good that you have these two entities that are are concerned with land use and the built environment in Littleton. And it would be nice to, you know, have us not in our separate silos as much.
Who is their staff person? Like ours is Sarah.
Uh, I mean, all the planners are liaisons to Plan Commission.
Okay.
Um, you uh have Sarah as your primary, but we still, you know, Jesse and I are are definitely a part of of uh, you know, staff that you reach out to.
Sure.
But anything, you know, you can convey those, I, you know, thoughts, ideas, et cetera to us and we're.
No, I I only ask in that um one mechanism for doing this would be. Uh, a report, like a five-minute report of what Planning Commission did in last month's meeting. So that we would, if they were making decisions or or doing something that had impact. There would be a mechanism to for us to hear about that, other than going to the minutes, which I don't see any of us doing. But Jared or Sarah could say, okay, these three things happened at the Planning Commission meeting last month.
Yeah, and just for your knowledge, um, Plan Commission has not had an agenda for a couple uh meetings here lately. So we've got a couple of items that are right on the cusp.
Meaning they haven't met?
Correct, they haven't met, so so no real update, just uh to start me off, yeah, tonight, no real update.
Not missing you.
Uh, the main items though that Plan Commission has been tackling um have been uh M D Ps. So uh master development plans for uh oftentimes larger um. Commercial and multifamily developments that have been coming through.
Like Mineral Avenue or something like that?
Yeah, um, uh Combine Square was a recent one, just south of Combine Square. Uh, is a uh another multifamily, but age restricted. Trying to think of the others, we we did a lot of work on seven hundred West Minerals, so the Lumen site uh in the fall.
Yeah.
Um, and did quite a bit of work there. Uh, the M D P for the multifamily portion of that came through Plan Commission in the spring here. Uh, so they've been pretty focused on M D Ps as of late, but that being said, we're also going to be working on uh some U L U C updates as well. We tried to do kind of an annual update, but we're starting to break that up in a little different strategy to do more of a thematic approach. So um they'll be working on some housing items in the next six months-ish. Um, and then we do have some cleanup items, a lot of those are generated not only by staff's uh desire to clean things up. But also in this case by the most recent legislative update. So we need to take a legislative update to Plan Commission and City Council and then subsequent code changes. So those are on the kind of horizon there, uh amongst other um. You know, applications that are brought to us.
And and those cleanup items and U L U C changes, I mean, that's something we have in common with Planning Commission, cause they should be on our agenda as well. But you know, I I don't think that this is happening right now, but um you you don't want Planning Commission and um. Historic preservation to be working at cross purposes, so.
I I would agree, I don't think um that that's occurring at at this point in time. Um, when we get into more code update items, um, it might be something for us to at least just give you. A heads up that you might want to, you know, look just look at those code updates. There's typically a a comment period, you're more than welcome to to add comments to those items. I'm not sure we'll bring um this next round of of code updates to H P C just because of kind of the the housing driver. Uh, versus, I yeah, I'm not sure they'll touch too much on uh H P C items, but if it does, we'll keep you updated on it.
Yeah, as long as this it's it it, you know, code updates that are in a historic district, one would think that we would be consulted.
Yeah, and we certainly understand that, um, you know, that you have some ideas of code updates. I think that's a really great item for a plan. Um, we have been uh quite busy with development items and a couple other code updates. So it's kind of making sure that we get into kind of that queue for staff availability. Um, and doing something like this will help us uh help us do that.
If the City Council does budget the sub-area plan. Will the Planning Commission be tasked with overseeing that or or given any role? If if you had to predict?
Uh, we haven't finalized the strategy on that yet, but normally, um, in my experience, what occurs is. Uh, you have one uh commission, one entity that is the recommending body for the plan to. That will ultimately head to City Council. My recommendation would be that that is Plan Commission, however, that's not to say that there wouldn't be, um, you know. We would certainly reach out to H P C for a comment, there might be um. A, you know, additional means of of getting involved in that plan, but but H P C would definitely be a part of it. They may not be the recommending body, but they they will be a part.
No, I'm not suggesting we should be, but to Kim's point of uh more engagement with the Planning Commission. If the sub-area plan is funded, by definition, we will be more engaged with them. Because we would be sticking our nose in the historic pieces of that sub-area plan.
Correct.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that's definitely our intent, is to to have you as a um a strong component of that historic preservation.
So Sarah, in terms of an outcome for tonight, is is there anything in particular that you were looking for?
Yeah, so I think we kind of, if you if we are good in terms of kind of those those broad topic areas. Kind of going that path, I think that pretty much gets us to kind of the goal of creating goals for this evening. And right now I have it as just preservation, outreach and education, and then internal development. Is there anything else that we're thinking of that we would wanna add? Or maybe make things a little bit more nuanced if we wanted to?
I like that the something to do with connectedness and inclusion, whether that means um that they're nice broad terms that we could do a lot underneath. And they tie to a bunch of the different vision guiding principles, et cetera, that you see and envision.
Is that connectedness and that?
And inclusion?
Can you kind of unpack that a little bit?
So connectedness could be anything from us being more connected with the public in what we do. Or what the sub-area means, or the beautiful new signage that comes up. So we could do connectedness in that way first, if we were getting specific with goals. It could be connectedness with um similar inter entities as ours to share information. Or to um collaborate on something. Connectedness could mean, you know, we're nosy in areas we are nosy right now. Um, it could be collaborating with Littleton Historic, is that what?
Historic Littleton.
H.
HLI.
HLI, for example, and then inclusion could mean something. The umbrella of that could be that in addition to preservation, we're also committed to. Not just staying in that historical silo, but including ideas around functionality and safety and mobility and environmental impacts. Or we could give ourselves an even broader of, you know, in. The. In modern. In the more modern context of the word inclusion, it could even go so far as. We are trying to seek more diversity in our representation for the voices that we have saying what is. What is the look and feel of the historical downtown or the sub-area? So as in, we need more women that have a voice here, we need more ethnic and racial diversity that have a voice here. Even to the extent of what is the population and are we mirroring what our current population demographics look like? So we know that we truly are representing the population that we have here. So they're big terms that allow us to go lots of little directions, a variety of directions, we don't have to do all of them, that would be too much.
Yeah, I think that that connectedness is a very nice word.
Connectedness, okay.
How is it different than outreach? Cause every one of your examples, I was like, that's outreach, that's outreach, that's outreach. So if you, maybe we swap out the word connectedness instead of outreach?
I mean, it's so funny, cause when you were saying outreach, I was like, inclusion, inclusion, inclusion.
So I mean, if it's semantics, I'm I'm all for changing the words if you like those words better. But I'm really hesitant to add a whole new category where we're going to spend a ton of time figuring out, is it this one or this one?
Let's be efficient and make it one or the other, you're totally right. Cause when you were saying that, I was thinking, oh, this is the broader category of.
I I see connectedness being much bigger than just outreach.
I think we could put connected under the outreach category and it would still be included in this.
Yeah, outreach seems more like one-sided though, like we are giving information to the community and. Connectedness is maybe more of like a a feedback loop.
So connectedness and outreach?
Or we could say connectedness and it definitely includes an outreach objective and a or or objective or goal specific. I mean, it it's semantics, we are doing.
Yeah, it is semantics.
That's awesome.
I love semantics.
What?
I love semantics.
I just don't wanna get bogged down, say guns from now on, which committee you?
Sure. Yeah, no, I agree, I agree that I think they should, they should, are probably one. And maybe connected.
I think it falls under the same outreach, I just think that outreach is us doing it. Whereas if like if the wording makes it seem more included in a community connectedness exploration. So I like the wording of that better, cause the other one sounds labor intensive on my part, which I object.
So I was gonna put.
To your point about inclusion.
On every single one of them is that this is your responsibility to work.
Um, is also representing and understanding stories of every, and and that kind of side of thing too, is it's also. Inclusion in what you may be focused on in terms of preservation. The preservation movement is definitely, has a history of focusing on properties and buildings. That are connected more with kind of wealthy white landowners or property fed architects and all of that kind of stuff. There's been a greater movement of understanding those marginalized communities. And so that, to your point with inclusion, starts to really also pull, could pull in that as well. It's inclusion not only of of who you guys are, but also what we're looking at preserving.
Well, and I think it's that those kinds of stories and that those kinds of structures are probably the most vulnerable to, to being lost. Like, look at what happened in Five Points, you know?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
So.
Nine historic structures and that was it. But yeah, I think to your to your point, I mean, that's it, what a wacky idea to actually focus on the people who live there. Instead of just the people who.
Buildings, yeah. I like it. I just wanted to share with you guys that I was in Alabama recently. And Coleman, Podunk, Red Knuck Town, don't get me wrong, adore it, they have a historic district and all the historic houses had brand new plaques. With Q R codes you could scan and go to the whole history of it. And this town is. Super white trush southern, like I don't mean it in like the worst way possible, but it is.
Make sure that's on the record there.
Yeah.
No kidding.
No, it's 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 incredible, like it's it's just, yeah, it's who they are. I don't know how to explain it, but they had these incredible plaques, every single one, they were huge, they were colored. They had Q R and they've just gotten them, and I don't understand why the heck we don't have plaques. Like, I'm real pissed about it.
We tried, we we took a run at it.
Paige brought up plaques last night.
I like plaques.
Well, cause I'm about to go, I just think I say this all the time.
Cause I think the property owners will pay for the plaques, like if funding is the issue, that's bypassing.
We're on board.
Jared, can you please put that in the quest, we need plaque funding.
Yes, like.
Well, I'm not gonna be, I mean, maybe it's an option, like, do you want a plaque?
Like a standard thing.
So if we agree to goals, then we get to talk about much more fun.
The objectives, yes.
So that requires us to decide what this number two is.
Okay, goals are agreed now.
Hey.
Pick a word, pick a word.
We are not connected. Outreach. No, huh, okay, sorry, outreach is fine.
Yeah, so, to kind of get back to, so what I'm hearing is preservation and internal development. Yes. Connectedness and inclusion, are they, is it connectedness and inclusion? Is it connectedness and or?
Connectedness and outreach.
Like, too separate, or is it education, yeah?
Uh, yeah.
Connectedness and outreach?
Yes.
Cause I think inclusion can be outreach. Education and inclusion?
Yes.
You gotta lock in to something.
Zip it.
I've got, I've got something exciting.
No, you threw another word out.
Okay.
No more new, no more new, no more new.
Die.
Tiny, tiny adjustment, what about, what about holistic preservation gets to the inclusion that we would drop.
No.
Nope.
Oh my god.
No, shut up, shut up, stop it, holistic.
Every.
Holistic?
Holistic.
Oh my god.
But I forgot to put on let.
I think that's too broad.
Is this gonna be P C bingo?
Maybe it's more.
Oh my god, I hate this.
Maybe it's more in terms of the holistic preservation, cause I.
That wasn't, that was a bomb.
Like that term.
I got it, I I get it.
No, stop it, you don't like it.
I do, because I don't think it's gonna be one of our goal areas. I think it's how we talk about how we approached this. We are taking a holistic approach to historic preservation. It is the outreach, the education side of things, it is the physical preservation and stewardship of the historic properties. It is your kind of internal development, it's looking at all aspects of preservation. And putting it, so that is more, I think, maybe almost in a background statement of saying, this is a.
Yeah, it's more guiding.
Or like a vision statement, or like this is how we.
Lizzie, zip it.
I let it go, I'm letting it free.
But I like the term.
Okay, so I move.
I don't know, connectedness and outreach. I like connectedness and outreach.
Yeah, I think.
Cause I think connectedness and. Cause it needs connecting and outreach.
But you've left inclusion out.
But we can put it as a sub one under that.
Inclusion can be an adjective we put on lots of things.
There's three points that we put under them.
I doubt, I'm just trying to get us to consensus.
Okay, we're down, we're down.
Yes.
Everybody vote thumbs up.
On what?
Just vote.
Can we vote in a study session, can we?
On what?
Can we?
Well, you can do a consensus, so.
You can come to consensus.
Okay, if you could say, put thumbs up, um, we're gonna just, shut up, sure.
What's the proposal?
Um, connectedness and outreach as a goal.
This is awful.
We throw them out there to make sure that I also under.
Yeah, no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate what you are, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Goal, preservation. Goal, internal development, goal, connectedness and outreach.
With a sub under it saying, what's that word?
Inclusion.
Inclusion.
What if?
One of the points, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna do a lot of subs.
Under it for later.
The objective speak to that.
So we have a whole lot before, let's, yeah, let's just do the goals.
That's perfect.
Does everybody feel good about those four goals?
I I want two and three reversed.
Okay.
The this connectedness is more important than.
Dude, dude.
Pick a side.
Wait, no, yeah.
I'm sticking to how it's been the whole time.
Preservation, connectedness and outreach, internal development.
She changed it now.
So, yeah, yes, so.
Okay, yeah.
So in ranking of, and yeah.
Yeah, internal development's last.
Yeah, that's fine, and also.
He said it second.
Yeah, cause growth happens later.
So this is a little bit of a semantics thing, but one of the helpful, to your point, I think, yes, putting it first, cause people see it first. Let's do present like that order, but when we number the goals, that's not the prioritization of them. So that kind of stuff.
It's optics, it's optics.
Yes, yes, absolutely, okay, cool.
I feel like connectedness and outreach should be pink in the color scheme. I'm done.
Did we decide on connectedness and outreach?
Well, we'll let you take your artistic liberty on that, Sarah.
Okay. So it's connectedness and outreach.
I also don't know what the branding guidelines for the city are and in what colors we can use.
Well, perfect.
Cause that is how we chose the colors or Northwood, I did it, yeah.
I think that's.
Well, it's like the traffic, why?
We were very productive, we have three goals.
Yes. No, no.
Everybody run, everybody run.
No, don't call on her.
Absolutely, everyone's voice matters.
Let her call the.
Yes.
When we say internal development, that actually already sounds like a goal, it sounds very pretty specific. Could we say education?
No.
Totally different, that's where, that's what you just replaced with education.
Yeah, I I don't know, either do you.
What about it, what about internal development?
Yeah. Oh my god, Lizzie, why did you call on her? I told you not to. It's like my favorite thing, we can stop, I'm I I voiced it.
No, I I see.
I just couldn't.
Education is her.
Do I get to say, I like your input?
Yes.
Um, Amy.
You wanna call it?
Oh shit. So I I s- I think internal development is much more, I mean, education is a piece of it, but it's really infrastructure building. It's, it's, it's finding resources within the commission, within the city, within our partners. It, I mean, to to me, that's where the connectedness piece also applies.
Are we just gonna look up sending ends?
I kind of think.
Get your tablet up.
I I think connectedness to me isn't necessarily a goal, it's how we go about all three things, the holistic piece.
It's a guiding principle.
Exactly, yeah, and it's a guiding principle, as we see up there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think we will see connection running through these like a red thread through all of the goals as we create the tactics and
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
and strategies around them. Um my my advice is to to really, to not necessarily try to make the third piece bigger than it really is. I mean, it's big enough already.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
I I I'm completely at peace with all of these decisions, I just love talking.
Okay. Zip. Thank you for that, that was, thank you, that was good, we're thinking.
No, that's sweet. We appreciate everyone's feedback, absolutely.
Don't call.
Life, couple meetings. So, I'm gonna read them what I think they are and in the correct order.
No, we're good, we agree.
Which is preservation, connectedness and outreach, and internal development.
Perfect.
Yes.
Are we all?
Meeting adjourned.
I think we're good.
Happy enough.
Yes.
Happy enough, that's fine.
In in preparation for the next, you know, month's meeting and in order to to move this forward, it's great that we have the the three, you know, high, uh.
Goals, the word is goals.
Thank you. Goals, thank you, we have the three goals. So um to work on objectives, would you like staff to uh come with a list of some ideas that you can build onto or amend, et cetera? Or would you prefer to kind of start cleanly?
I no, well, I think definitely recommendations from staff, just so we can understand what's realistic.
We will have this.
Yeah.
Because we know that this is gonna be using your time um and potential resources. So I think at least a a set of goals to start with that you think realistically we can work on.
And approved color scheme.
But this is where Paige and Kim's input last month drops in.
Yeah.
It drops in right here, so I think task number one for next month is to take Paige and Kim's suggestions and say,
Absolutely. Yeah.
do we wanna do that and where does it fit?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, our suggestions, you know, for the most part, well, we had, you know, some that were kind of uh strategic
No, I think that's good.
and others that were very tactical.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And they need to go in different buckets, obviously.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I was actually about to speak to that, as I think part of that too, I can go through and also kind of start to, we can bring all of it and we'll be talking primarily about objectives, but maybe starting to show some examples of these items where it might be more action item than objective.
Mm-hmm.
Which will be helpful to kind of start to understand, it's a slight difference, but it, go ahead.
But I don't wanna lose. I don't wanna lose the specificity. I don't wanna make it sound loosey goosey so that we no longer are saying plaques, because we really want plaques, so.
Correct.
Well, and it's good for us.
Right, and so part of this too is that kind of funneling, so your action items really get to those specifics.
Yeah.
Because an objective could have multiple ways of meeting that objective. And that's where that one year work program comes in.
Right.
So as part of putting those kind of objectives together, it may include what we might think that outcome is. But ultimately, it's that like action item, like it's that really technical like nuance where we can say, we want plaques that have QR codes.
Right.
Like that is super specific, the objective may be, we want to provide a means for our residents to have, to kind of show off their houses. Or I'm kind of spitballing, I would be, I could write much better than that, I promise.
Right, right.
Right.
But it's that kind of, that kind of situation, so, but I do think kind of, I can go ahead and start dividing them out that way so that we don't lose them.
I get it, right. Right.
And if we can start building at least a couple easy success, not easy, but like some successes that we can start early, getting into that bucket and, yeah.
Yeah, sure, get the moment to go in, absolutely.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Would a preservation plan be an objective? I mean, it's a a big thing, so it's big enough to.
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely, yeah, so that would be more kind of that objective of, and that's where you get some of the specifics, but then maybe our action items are the components of that. How do we start that process, how do we, et cetera?
Yeah, we'll have to talk timeline on some of those items as well, kinda anticipate, et cetera.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Right.
Will we get to the next meeting, please? I'm gonna bring a synonym dictionary to the next meeting, just.
You mean a thesaurus?
That's called a thesaurus.
That one.
Synonym dictionary.
A synonym of synonym dictionary.
I was checking, yeah, I was a little worried, sorry.
Totally.
What would a synonym for synonym dictionary?
Alright. Oh, that's funny.
So, okay, so it sounds like, yeah, I will have the goals kind of written out and then we'll start to kind of, as part of the, more of a staff report maybe than the staff communication side, put some of those potential examples.
Perfect.
Can I throw out just an idea?
Yeah.
Oh, god.
Not, not words, we don't have to do it, actually, it'll be fun.
No, call it as it is.
I went and I uh uh met a friend in Castle Rock for lunch.
Oh.
And I've always, you know, like Castle Rock, whatever. And Ca- Castle Rock was pretty awesome from a historic preservation point of view, I was stunned.
Yeah.
Really, yeah.
Do they have plaques?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, they got plaques.
Do they have QR codes on them?
I don't know, I don't know.
But they have, you know, they have designated properties and stuff like that, and I always thought Castle Rock, I mean, I had no clue.
They got.
Yeah, they have some, they have some cute stuff up there.
That rock's been there a long time.
Yeah.
But you know, I think that that um I've, you know, learned all of that just by going down there and looking and and checking it out. And Northland, I mean, you know, Northland's always been like, oh, you know, that's stuff up north and it's all brand new. So, yeah, this is, these are eye opening and to go around, um you know, in summertime, maybe if you're meeting friends for lunch, go do do it in in one of these places, not like a long one.
Yeah, that could be part of our outreach.
Also, to your point, that is something that we could look at in terms of internal development as part of an objective is talking to other, it's field trips, it's talking to other HPCs
Exactly.
joining their meeting or having them come here, things like that can also be, um we have a CLG coordinator at the state, so finding other kind of that, those um contacts I can grab kind of thing, so if there are places or if we don't know anyone kind of thing, that's also an option in terms of, it's also learning from what other commissions are doing, what other communities face.
Yeah.
Um as well, which can always be really helpful.
Great. Well, this is a very, oh.
I just had a quick announcement when uh if if you're wrapping up.
Oh, yeah, no, I was gonna adjourn, so you go.
Okay, real quick, congratulations, Lena, and we have Sarah's birthday as well, so.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Is it today?
Oh, happy birthday.
It's. Thank you.
That's all just fun.
That's great, when you send your your spending logs, it's totally fun.
Right?
I, my folks were in town, so I had a good, I had a.
It will never be forgotten, I'll tell you, this is an easy way to remember it.
So that's all just fun enough.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you, everyone, this was a really great discussion, I'm very excited to get down to the tactics for next next month. Um but I will go ahead and adjourn this study session at eight forty-three.